Wendy, should we start?
I'm ready to, I'm ready to get started.
Okay, great. Well, it's two oh four and technically we have five minutes to complete our agenda item number one. So thank you, folks. Welcome to the June seventh, twenty twenty-three Urban Flood Safety Water Quality District meeting. We are video recording this meeting for your information and I'll ask Wendy to do a local order of business.
Nancy Henderson.
I'm here.
Steve Panzer is absent. Eric Mueller.
Here.
Dave Redman.
Here.
Seth Reiser.
Here.
Ashton Simpson is in Washington DC and not able to join us. Lori Stigman is in the middle of budgets and not able to join us. Emerald Bog is not feeling well. Corky Collier.
Here.
James Allison.
Here.
Mary Helen Kincaid.
Here.
Kenny Staffensen.
Here.
Eric Molander.
Here.
Brent Cartwright.
Here.
Ed Washington. Not heard from Ed. Bob Salinger. Was at the previous meeting. Heather King.
Here.
There are a lot in board numbers present.
Great, thank you Wendy. My clock shows two and five, so we are on time before turning things over to Lori. Baker for Agenda Item Two, the Forecast Check-In. I just want to acknowledge her work for being here to welcome you and to appreciate the work you did during the last session. Make a modest request. It's we only have an hour today. We can try to keep our comments clear and focused on the discussion as succinct as possible and be mindful that even though we don't have everyone here today, I'm sure a lot of us have things to say and making sure both of us choose to do so. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lori.
Thank you, James. Let me share my screen. All right, can y'all see my screen?
Got it.
Perfect. So today I just have a quick set of slides to recap our review of the urban district forecast from our last meeting. I'm going to start today with an overview of why we're here. So we're creating a safer path to flood safety that is cost-effective and sustainable. That sustainability is a key piece for us to consider as we look at the forecast and evaluate what will work for the long term. So the forecast you received in the last meeting reflects staff's recommendation in support of the consolidation to the urban district. The forecast in year one totals sixteen point seven million dollars. It includes contingency dollars to allow for funding of unanticipated costs, dollars to maintain the system, and funds to begin to address the new mandates for the district. Staff are proposing two sources of revenue to support this spending. First is to, at least in interim, continue the assessments on floodplain properties and to consider a privilege tax for the entire district that would be applied in some manner to municipal stormwater utility gross revenues. So the forecast that we provided is a balanced solution for the urban district. With the two forms of revenue, we project total resources for the district of sixteen point seven million dollars. These resources provide adequate funding to cover the forecast expenditures of sixteen point seven million dollars. Will there be some timing issues related to cash flow under this proposal? It's quite possible, particularly in the first year and even the following years, but as we start working on the year one budget, we'll begin to evaluate both the resources and expenditures on a monthly basis to evaluate that need for cash flow timing solutions. Some of those solutions that we use in government finance, at least for this entity, we would have in year one the ability to continue to borrow on that line of credit from the city of Portland. We could consider short-term borrowing that is called tax anticipation notes with our bank. That would provide funding that would be paid back once the assessments begin to be deposited in November and December. That's not something that the districts have partaken in in the past, but it is certainly is a regular activity for many of our local governments as those property tax revenues or in our case, the property assessments come in later in the fiscal year. And so during that interim timing, the banks are very familiar with the situation and will provide tax-exempt funding that will allow us to carry on with our operations during that gap. We can also look at timing of spending and consider delays of project spending or other cash flow timings such as delays in hiring or leaving open positions open until we can kind of get past that period of waiting for collection. So those are all things that we consider when we're taking a look at a budget. I haven't honestly spent the time working on this yet. I know what the available solutions are, but until we really come to a point of understanding the dollar amount that we want to look at for year one, it would be kind of like a dog chasing its tail. I would continue to do these numbers, but we couldn't really come to a final solution until we knew for sure the number that we were working with. So let's just take a minute to return to that fund balance discussion that we've had a couple of times now related to our legacy districts. As you know, the districts have made the decision to spend down fund balances as we move towards consolidation. And this spending is progressing as we planned. So why is this important? Because unlike our proposed urban district forecast, which balances spending to available resources, our legacy districts are spending more than they have in ongoing resources. This spending pattern is not sustainable. We're at a point where we either need to move forward with the consolidation or find other funding solutions so that we can avoid service disruptions in our legacy districts. But it is a point in time that we knew was going to be coming. And there are different ways to address it, obviously, with one of them being moving forward with the consolidation. So these are our next steps in the process. We're asking the board to move forward with step one, evaluating the amount of the year one spending forecast, which we've got on the table, the proposal for sixteen point seven million dollars. Today you have time on the agenda to discuss the forecast and other questions around that. I think we've preliminarily put some time on the June fifteenth agenda for you to consider a motion to move forward with a dollar amount for year one so that we can start to do further analysis for you so that you can see the impact of the revenue options as well as some cash flow modeling that we need to do for you. And with that, I'm going to pull down my screen because that is all I've got for you today. And now I'm going to be quiet because this is your time. Thank you.
If I could jump in, the key here is to get that variable fixed so we can do the analysis to answer the individual impacts questions that you all are rightfully asking. And I want to remind you, it's a forecast, not a budget. It does not appropriate a single dime. You're not authorizing any spending of any kind, but you are allowing us to take the next steps to create answers and analysis to support your future decision-making. So that is the frame. I hope you can hold yourself in as you spend your time together this afternoon. Thank you.
Great, thank you Lori. Thank you Jim. With that, we have an open discussion. And I will just reiterate again, we are not approving a terrible budget, nor are we approving, we're discussing line items within the budget that will come later. Happens every year on all of these boards.
Hey, James, does anybody else having trouble hearing him? I mean, I know I have hearing aids, but it sounds like your mic's not close enough to your.
Yeah, I moved it farther away because I was eating lunch during one of my meetings and that was not.
There you go. I hope it was a good lunch, but I want to hear what you're saying.
Yes. So anyway, so just reiterate that we are not approving a budget, nor are we approving the line items within the budget. All of you who are on the legacy boards know the process we utilize for that each year. So I do want to just open it up to board members in terms of what you, what we need to do. Each of you, what does each one of you need so that you can hopefully vote affirmatively or vote at all.
I'm sorry, I still can't hear you. I just can't make it out.
Is that through your phones?
It is.
I volume all the way up.
I will say to everyone, there is a closed caption available if that helps you, but James, you added.
Sure. Is it still, still bad?
It's very faint.
Blame city, blame city of Portland then. Well, in that case, I hadn't planned on talking much anyway, so let's have an open discussion about, about this year one forecast and what people need to eventually vote on it.
I'm just gonna say really quickly, I turned the sound way up in my headphones and that helped a lot.
Well, Mr. Chair, you're asking for a general question or general comments on moving forward? Okay, well, I guess, you know, from my standpoint, the part of what Jim said, you know, I guess I would just echo is that this is just a framework. It's a forecast. We're not voting to spend money at this point, but we are trying to say this is what we believe in a large aggregate amount. The amount of resources we need for the district to successfully operate day in, day out, week in, week out for a year. You know, it's not addressing the long term, the capital side for the PMS projects. It's not addressing, you know, lots of other things. This is just what do we need to operate the district for that first year? And it's going to be imperfect. It's going to turn out to be different than what we're estimating and guessing because there's stuff we don't know. There's circumstances that are going to occur that we don't know. But I think that the sixteen point seven million reworked framework forecast is a reasonable proposal for us to say, yes, this is your framework to build us a budget proposal on for later this year that would be dealt with for a year from now's TSCC hearing. And that staff's got to have a number so that they can go build the revenue resources side. Because until they know that number, it's difficult for them to be able to provide us information on what is it going to cost us? For this type of a business or this resident in this location or in the floodplain or out of the floodplain or any of the many questions that we still have on the revenue side. We need to say this is what our operating framework is aggregate for the first year. And so all that is to say is that I'm prepared to support approval of that number at the meeting. It's what, not next week, two weeks? I lose track of when their June meeting is, but I'm certainly in favor of moving forward with that, that current sixteen point seven framework. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Eric. Eric Molander.
One of the things I think that we need to consider as we look at this budget is that we need to do some massive contingency planning. It has a five point seven million dollar revenue gap, not including the additional cash that we need for operating reserves to get us from July one to when the first tax receipts come in. And so as I would look at this, I would urge staff to think about ways in which if we don't, or if we do have legislative roadblocks in January of twenty twenty-four, that we have the capability to ratchet back spending enough that we can actually stand up the district without the privilege tax or the intergovernmental taxing authority that we need in order to finance the organization.
Great, thank you, Eric. I assume Jim and Lori that we, that staff might issue a response for how that contingency might work, obviously not now, but at some point.
Yes, James, I appreciate that and I appreciate the question, Eric, and it's something that I spend a lot of time thinking about, but have not put pencil to paper yet because I really have been waiting to get that final number so that I know what I'm looking at. So that I can be effective and efficient with district resources right now. So I could spend a lot of time doing a lot of different versions, but I don't, I don't think that the board members would want me to spend those resources right now without knowing what, having a feel for the direction that we're going in. But thank you for the question and the comments. I appreciate it.
So will you put together a contingency plan for us?
Yes, that's, that's part of the discussion that we're having behind the scenes is that we need to look at the timing of these things and make sure that we have a good, solid Plan B when, when we start to look at cash flow for the urban district.
So when we look at the cash flow for the urban district, are you assuming that in addition to the assessment authority that you're going to take over our reserve balances?
I haven't pulled all of that information together, Eric, but it is possible that that could be one of the options that's presented.
And might I suggest that, again, I have to, sorry, I have to keep refocusing myself on this, that our, our task is to get to the year one budget that we can all agree, hopefully, hopefully through consensus and unanimity, we can agree to that. But how we, how we collect revenue and ensuring that we collect the revenue for that year one budget is part of question two. Is that, did you say that's true, Jim and Lori?
That, that's our goal and I hear loud and clear the need for a backup plan around the year one forecast. Should we not be successful with our preferred recommendation? I think the challenge for the staff is the timing of that. We need you to set the number so that we can bring you those alternative scenarios and backup plans.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Lori. Seth.
Yeah, I think as I'm looking at the proposal, one of the big unknowns for me is what's included in the asset preservation? That seven and a half million dollars over the five years, what's included in there? Because that was one number that dropped considerably from the November, or I'm sorry, October presentation. I mean, I'm just not sure what got cut, if things got moved out of that and into the bond. Not sure if, what exactly that's funding and it is relatively small, but it also is the one that, you know, we've received a lot of detail on personnel and materials and services. That's one where I'm not really sure what makes up that one and a half million dollars the first year and every year afterwards.
Sure, and I can take that one. Thanks, Seth. Yes, that number that was originally two million dollars in the first forecast and now is one and a half is an averaging of the assets and liability study. So if you look at the assets and liabilities study each year, it's a different amount. You know, some years it's seven hundred thousand, some years it's three million, depending on the lives of the assets and what needs to be replaced. A portion of those assets in the asset and liability study are, we are able to identify and fund via the geo bond. And so thus we were able to feel comfortable with reducing that average amount, which is the one point five million dollars. Now, honestly, the one, it won't, every year it won't be one point five million dollars. You can look at our capital budget right now and it's not consistent from one year to the next because as I said, the asset lives and the replacement needs differ from year to year. What I would hope is that our new board would be amenable to discussing a capital reserve process. So if there were a year where we didn't need the full one point five million dollars, then we would have funds that we could start to push into a capital reserve to create that stability for the district on an ongoing basis. So that's really the concept. I can't tell you specifically what's in the one point five million dollars for year one because honestly, it's an average. And we would have to do more of a capital budget process for that year one budget to be able to give you specifically what we're going to need. So there may be some play in that number or there may be some projects that we had in line that needed to be done that can't be done because the one point five doesn't cover them. So and it's, and it differs from year to year.
Okay. And here's why I think that's important. And I know we're trying to focus on the year one operating budget, but we're also discussing, and it seems like most of the projects that are on the bubble for whether or not they're going to be included in the geo bond. If we don't fund them through the geo bond, we'd have to find another source of funding them. And so that's where I, I know that we're splitting these into two tracks, but it's the amount of money we build into the operating budget for capital is directly related to how much we load into the geo bond. And I don't have enough detail to understand what the trade-off is between moving projects between those two things. And that's where it would be helpful in discussing it with our elected officials to say, these are, these are the projects that are needed to be funded. If we choose not to support the geo bond because of these projects in there, we would need to be willing to put that into the operating revenue and collect that through that mechanism. And so being able to talk about those as a discrete package of projects is, will be helpful in clarifying kind of, you have Plan A or Plan B of how you want to do this, but these are things that need to be done.
There's some complexity to that question.
Yeah.
First being, it depends on what year that we're looking at. Second being, we have, and Colin has even good news this week, we've been very successful at requesting grant funding for capital projects. And we intend to continue to do those asks and continue to have that level of success, which allows us, you know, really some stability for the organization. So a capital list for a specific year, not knowing what items we would identify for grants is, is a budget process. And we really need to kind of firm up some of the timing and some of that other information to be able to give you that specific list. And you're right, we've said if we don't, if we don't get a two hundred million dollar bond, then we would need to fund those somehow. Clearly, a seventeen million dollar budget is not going to make up for switching from two hundred million to one fifty. It just is not. So there would need to be state support. There would need to be grant support. There would need to be federal support. And all of those things are things that we have worked with, you know, in the history of our organization, but very difficult to pin down right now without the timing and the specifics behind what we're working on.
No, I, I understand and I agree with you, but if, if we're wanting to get to a specific number for year one and we don't have the specificity to pin that down, then it's kind of a, it makes it difficult to get, get there.
It does. It's, it's an estimate and I think that that's hard to deal with. I get it. You've got a much more difficult job than I do. I can run the numbers and then you have to make the decisions and you have to talk to your local authorities and, and your local commissions and make sure that they feel comfortable with that. And that's a really hard conversation when you're dealing with estimates. So I get it and I really am appreciative of what you all are facing.
Okay. So just in general, more specificity around the capital and how that interplay is. And then the second point I would make, just in general, I'm okay with setting the number for the first year. We've talked a lot in this discussion of operating expenditures about transitory costs, about kind of debt service and about new responsibilities and new mandates and how those are funded. I think kind of what I would put out to the board is that my hope personally is that as the new district forms and, you know, I think Eric pointed out, as the debt service rolls off and as the transit, transition costs of the new district hopefully get worked out by the time we hit the end of this five-year forecast, that a lot of the money that is appropriated for operating expenditures would transition from debt service to asset preservation, capital sinking fund, and also into the new responsibilities and mandates and away from the costs that we're in. I don't need to necess, I don't think it necessarily is productive to try and detail out how that's going to happen, but it might be worth as a board, as we're formulating this to say, we are approving this as the year one budget, but the idea is then in five years, these costs will transition to more of capital sinking fund and that the new responsibility level that we're approving year one, we're hoping as we transition that those programs will grow to a certain level and eventually become something. And I realize that that's the new board's prerogative in what they're doing, but I think that it might be worth putting something together to memorialize it as part of this board that that was the intention is that as the transition and debt service costs ramp down, those other responsibilities would ramp up. So I'll just put that out there for a general discussion, parking lot for our next conversation.
And I would just say thank you for putting that on the table. That is probably the best support that a CFO can ask for is for their board to be open to such considerations. So having some fund balance planning, having some way to stabilize operations for the organization is something that is really, really critical for us so that we continue to have that stability and stability then in rates for our rate payers. So I, I do appreciate you bringing that up and I will be quiet from here.
Great, thank you Lori and Seth. I want to concur with your recommendation because I have shared that concern about not a lot of capital funding in the operating forecast. So I appreciate the notion that future budgets that this, as some of our existing plan commitments around debt service and other things, as those go away, we have some, it's not one of the reserve, but it's a contingency for things like capital and perhaps the new year. It's, that's very well articulated and appreciated. Very healthy.
I vote that we get you a new set of headset that we can hear you. Have the city appropriate the funds for you because you were back to like ten feet away from your microphone for me. So I did hear my name. My question is, well, first a statement that I'm glad that I don't qualify to be a permanent board member because of the emphasis on understanding government finance because I don't and I don't want to. That said, I is there, what I understand we are to, to do today is identify those things that are most important. Is there a place in the packet that says these are the items in the first year for, I see five-year operating forecast and then there's broken out columns on page forty-two of a hundred and two that says summary of forecast cost by component. And then there's columns with dates. Where do I go to see the line items that I believe I'm being asked to comment on for this next fiscal year?
I, I think what we're, the line items will come in the budget. There are some broad categories in documentation that's been in your packets in the past and we could have happily single that document out and get it to you. But this is the broad number and then the next several months start beginning in probably September. We'll work with this board to develop the actual line items for the year one budget.
Okay.
So you have, you have broadly speaking planning and you have engineering and operations and you have administration and you have FTE versus consultants. But we don't have the specific, specific programmatic line items in there, but we will be discussing that with you as part of the year one budget development.
So if I say yes today to materials and services, but don't agree with some of the items contained in that.
You're only approving the raw number of sixteen point seven million. You're not authorizing allocation of spending at all. There's no dollars being awarded that staff are allowed to spend by the decision asking you to make at your next meeting. It's a, it's a number that we can plug into a bunch of analysis we need to do to respond to board member.
No, I thought we are, and I was the lone wolf that did not adopt the budget. So what's today's purpose besides between adopt and approve?
Oh, thank you. What you were, what you voted against was the budget beginning July first for that fiscal. for that fiscal year. What you're talking about with 16.7 million would be the forecast, not the budget for the following fiscal year. So beginning in July 2024 through June 30th of 2025.
Okay, so if how do I comment on that today if I don't know what's contained in it? It's just broad numbers.
What I would say is that this forecast is a consolidation of all of the budgets for all of the districts for 2324 with inflation added, because that's how you do budget is you, there's a bit of an increase. So you could, in theory, go to all of those budgets, Mary Helen, and see what the basis is for what created this number. So I didn't just pull 16.7 million dollars out of the air. It's based upon the budgets that are in existence for each of the individual districts right now, eliminating all of the interdistrict activity that happens because MCD is providing service to all of the individual districts.
Okay, so I'm thick as a brick and maybe I'll just abstain because I don't don't understand. Today I'm going to say one way or the other, yay or nay. Go ahead on the 16.7 million budget, but I won't understand what's in that because they're not. I would have to go and add up the four districts to get to that number.
It's well, number one, it's not a budget. It's a forecast for year after next. So the the meeting we had before this one was, yeah, the meeting before this one was talking about the budget, which is the 1.6 million dollars. And that's for next year, for all of the work that we're doing to try to pull all of this stuff together. This forecast is what will it take if for one district to operate all of the operations across what is operated by four districts right now? And so that the basis for that is the budgets that are being considered by each of the districts for next year.
And is there a document that tells me that that I'm not seeing or finding?
There are summarized numbers in that document that show you how the budgets add up. And then the individual approved budgets are out on the website. So you can see the detail behind those numbers that are being added up.
Okay.
Mary Helen.
There is no checklist.
The May 18th, the May 18th packet have details of the forecast. And
Okay. Thank you. I'll dig through. And thank you. I want to recognize Wendy for printing out my packet and giving me little binders, but I don't have those little colored tabs to put on the pages, so I took them out and turned the pages sideways that I wanted questions because I I couldn't find a document that said, do you approve this? It was like I had to go through several different pages to get that. And so May 18th, I'll look for that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary Helen. Lori, can you hear me? Can you hear me adequately? Is it safe to say for this discussion, is it safe to say? This is where I'm a little confused about dissolution, dissolution and the new board. I'm sorry, the elected board. Is it safe to say that next spring, starting next winter, culminating next spring, this board will will have had discussions on how that 16.7 million dollars gets spent. So we will actually approve that 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 budget. And this board could work with staff to determine where we spend that money, except that we have flexibility, including ending ending that fiscal year, that next fiscal year, that following fiscal year with a million dollars in reserves.
That is correct. If we follow the timeline as being proposed and the state legislature pulls it all together and and creates the miracle we're looking for, we will start in the fall with some priority goal setting for our budget process that then we will start working on in the winter and come back and start working with this board to work through the proposed approved and adopted budget that would utilize the 16.7 million or whatever dollar amount that you all direct us to move forward with. And so that's when you start to get the detail. More detail on FTEs, more discussion on assumptions and wage increases and benefits costs and materials and services and whether you like the $10 that we put on this line item or not. That's where all of that discussion happens. But it's going to start with some real goal setting and some real strategic planning with us with the board this fall. So it's a full, it will be a full process that this board is involved in.
Great. Thank you, Lori, for answering my elementary question. Nancy.
Okay, so this is a forecast. And are you looking, I didn't see like a I make a motion to approve. So you're looking from a thumbs up, thumbs down for us today?
I'm not asking for anything today. This is more discussion to make sure that I've provided you all with all of the information you need to make a decision on the 15th, and I won't be here. Somebody's gonna have to text me and tell me whether it runs forward or not.
Okay, thank you. So
We Nancy, we hope that this board would be open to considering such a motion at your next meeting on June 15.
Because this is a work session, and that's our meeting, and we don't vote at work sessions.
And we have heard from many board members that they wanted this time to be able to continue the conversation. So we want to ensure that we give all of you the opportunity to ask the questions and get the information that you need.
Okay, so it's going through my mind as we had, we talked a long time about budget, and we came up with an initial budget of about 33 million or something, which and then when that parsed out, we're like, oh, wait a minute. I don't think that I think that's too much. And so we've parsed back to basically half of that, which which is really to the bone, I think, and and for good reason, because our funding structure is, you know, we're trying to work out the mechanics, what we originally thought of is not going to work that well. And we're really looking for something that we're proposing, I think, in the next, in the short session, right? So got a lot of things that have to go right. At the same time, where the four individual districts are spending down their reserves. So it's I know it's not a big of a deal as our whole national debt limit ceiling, but I also feel like locally it's starting to me as a board member, it's feeling a little bit like that, like we're sort of running out of time to make decisions on to get this going. So with that, understanding that what you need is you need a forecast so you can work on the budget and which will include a lot more details. And at the same time, we're still working with our so as a board member, I'm saying as the same time, we're still working with our partners about mechanisms of how to move forward and legislature. And our PMLS project is starting. So that's cool. You know, clocks ticking. So I feel like, yeah, it's not perfect. It's probably not even close to perfect at this stage, but it is enough to go on with. And as representing the city, I'm saying the 16.7 forecast. You know, we've seen how you've juggled back and forth, and we also deal with budgets that are inadequate, but have to be enough to go on with at any given time. So so I would say that's kind of the context at which I'm looking at this. I look forward to working on the budget and contingency planning as a forecast. I think this is what we have to, I haven't heard anything better. Right? I've heard worse. So I think this is a good number to go on for now.
Great. Thank you, Nancy. Eric.
Yeah, I had been muted by Wendy. The 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 concern I have with with this is the reality of whether it's 15, 14, or 16, seven. This is really for revenue planning purposes. And what we should do is continue to allow board members to think through the priorities, but really come back to the essential issue, which is what's the voters' willingness to pay for the bundle of services that we're offering? And how are we going to test that short of a vote on our operating revenue model? So where we're faced today is that we need to put a stake in the ground, whatever number that is, so that we can go back to the public and either through a vote in May of 2024 on our operating revenue model or through polling to determine whether or not the voters have the stomach for the increase in fees that they're going to have to pay. So, you know, is 16, seven right? I think yeah. Nancy said it correctly. It's not perfect. It's a place to start. But the essential element is what's the voters' willingness to pay? And if we don't get that right, then we've got a really much more significant issue. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Eric. If you can hear me, you know, one thing I think about is this is the forecast that allows us to continue to do what we're doing now. So it crosswalks the budgets of the existing districts. It allows for some inflation 4% or something like that. It gives a few hundred thousand dollars to transition costs. A few hundred thousand, less than $400,000 for service gap. So it kind of, it meets my high level. It meets my high level needs. So I think that's where the where the where Penn One and the city sit at this point. Tanny.
Hey, good afternoon. So would we be looking at then for this next year? The first year of this, we'd be transferring over the assessments. Right? So the legacy districts would still be in operation at that time and moving the assessments over? Or would the legacy districts be gone at that point?
I think it would depend on the direction the board authorizes staff to take with the legislature and our success with the legislature. If we're unsuccessful getting an amendment to the authorizing statute for the urban, we would continue to keep the legacy districts in place and would use their assessment authority. And again, with respect to Eric Moeller's concerns, we would need to talk about how we'd make up the delta and staff's current best thinking subject to direction and conversation among the board. Would be we would continue to use the line of credit from the city of Portland that's still available to us and that we would likely pursue a renegotiation to extend the life of the LRC IGA for the remainder of the funding. But again, subject to more board deliberation, discussion and approval for those things. But it's possible, Tanny, that if early in short session, we are successful with those legislative changes, the tax year or fiscal year beginning July 1, those assessments could come directly to the urban district, and we would begin the process of dissolution. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but it's possible. If any other staff member wants to correct me, please do. I think I have it.
Okay. How do we plan to come to an agreement on some of the assumptions that we're making? I guess it'd be my next question, like MCD's debt, and if somebody has reserves, Lori, you were just talking about possibly that could be part of the conversation that those get transferred over.
And Hong, I'll ask for your backup here. The statute provides a process for an allocation of assets and liabilities as part of dissolution of the districts. So we've, I've not gone deep into studying that statute yet because we're not there yet, but there is a procedure outlined in statute to have a conversation among the boards with the urban board about how to allocate that. Hong, please correct me or fill in the details.
Well, actually, the statute doesn't specify a procedure. It just calls for the dissolution of the legacy districts upon the Nisha board achieving the operating revenue program. How the assets are divided up, how the debts are divided up. There is a provision for a debt distribution plan that must be could be negotiated between the respective legacy district and the urban district to resolve. With respect to that, I, you know, the the larger standard to which we should consider is the fact that all of the assets, liabilities and duties of the legacy districts are expected to flow up to the urban district to be the recipient of it. So I think we can talk about that distribution. We can talk about various assets and debts, but ultimately it all becomes the 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 responsibility of the urban district. And that's the that's the main goal, the sole goal. To make the process more streamlined, we should be looking at that statutory goal.
Okay, and that's to make this process more streamlined? Is that the process that you're referring to?
The to the to the extent that the this process right now is talking about the debts of the legacy districts or the assets of the legacy districts and how that should be managed. Ultimately, it all goes to the urban district. So in the interim, until we have an operating revenue system for the urban district, the legacy districts authorities still exist. And you may negotiate and work through the allocation of that and fund the urban district to the liking of this board as well as the legacy district board members. But ultimately, looking ahead, everything eventually flows up to the urban district. So whatever you allocate today to address the few inner years of interim operation will be just for that interim period.
Okay. And a significant source of revenue obviously is the privilege tax. And is there like some mathematical formula that it hits a particular property and they're charged X based on Y? That we could somehow apply to something?
The answer is not yet.
Not yet. Yeah.
Okay. But I'm just wondering the 5.4 million. What was the, you know what I mean? We came up with that based on something and what was?
It was the difference between the assessments and the total of 16.7 million dollars for the costs. It's the plug.
Okay. All right.
And Tanny, one thing you and I talked about prior to this meeting was the proposal also incorporates a 20% increase in assessments on the floodplain. And I know that that's a concern for many legacy board members and boards. So there is an opportunity to shift those costs again or reduce them. But we could reduce the amount of that increase and shift that into the plug of the privileged tax as Lori defined it. So again, options for this board as we build the year one budget to allocate those costs differently than we've recommended. And once we have the forecast number adopted by you guys, we will endeavor to bring you a more property property analysis or payer by payer analysis, depending on the structure of this fee. Again, looking at how other privileged taxes are applied. Typically, they're applied by a city to a utility on a gross receipts basis. And then the utility can determine how they want to allocate that cost among their payers.
And just for gross receipts, which receipts are we we talking about their water bill or their tax bill? What what are we talking about?
I I think that we need to do more analysis and research to determine what's going to work best across the landscape, and we'd like it to be consistent. I I don't have an answer. I'm inclined towards stormwater because it's more related to our flood costs, but I don't have knowledge about how each storm utility necessarily configures their budgets yet, and that's more work that we need to do. And I want to remind you, we also need to talk with Milwaukee and Lake Oswego as we're developing this methodology.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for those questions, Tanny. We've got about six minutes left. I want to make sure we get to Mary Helen and Eric. I need about 30 seconds at the end, please. Mary Helen. Oh. Mary Helen, you're muted. Mary Helen, we're muted.
Almost like you. How about what impact would Penn two have in when you use, when you use the word negotiate about debts and assets? So we I'm just going to be Mary Helen here. We could choose to not give you the money, or we could choose to spend all the money that we have as opposed to turn it over to the urban flood safety, water quality district. We could give it away in sponsorships. Up until the point of Up until the point of the dissolution, the state regulation, et cetera. That money is because I'm a Penn two supervisor, I'm responsible for the financial operations of the district. And so I determine how that money is spent based on landowners um, agreement. So I, how does that work? I mean, can we, at our, uh, just for instance, can we at our next meeting say we aren't gonna, we're gonna give them a hundred dollars and we're gonna spend the other, whatever it is. I don't even know how much there is. Used to be a pretty, we used to have a pretty good sum of money in there. Um, or we're gonna do this in capital investments to improve, prove our wetlands and waterways and all of those kind of things. How, how, when do we lose our power to control the money that we, that the board controlled for a hundred years?
Yeah, so, uh, there will be a call for dissolution by this initial, uh, initial urban district board upon the approval and receipt of funds uh, based on the operating, uh, revenue operating system. You have uh, either off, get authorized by the leg, the state legislature amended to the statute and then have I G As in place and you just start collecting revenue. Once there is a call for dissolution, the legacy district must put in motion to start dissolving, passing resolutions to start dissolving itself, assigning all of its assets, duties, liabilities to the urban district. Not something you can get away from because it's already in statute unless you change the statute. So when that happens is determined by when we have an operating, uh, revenue system in place for the urban district. How you use that money as a legacy district board member between now and then is obviously up to you as a district uh, board member, subject to your fiduciary duties of being, um, safeguarding the, the, the public funds and funding the, the operations of, in your case, Penn two.
So we can't go have a big party. So, well, I mean, maybe the neighbors would like that, but, or use it for community engagement events to lead up to the new. Anyway, I'm just throwing that out there. So statute has to say, um, approve our revenue, how we're gonna, uh, uh, obtain revenue, which would be include taking over the property tax collection from Penn two.
It could, if that's, if that is what the, you, this board approve as the measure to pursue uh, for statutory amendments. And if the state la, legislature passes, that's, that is a statutory.
Okay.
Great. Great. I want to jump in, Eric. Thank you for your patience.
Um, so let's talk about the legislative agenda for next year. Um, and I had a couple of things on my list. One is we need to get the right to, um, levy intergovernmental taxes. And we need the right to establish the privileged tax. Are there other things that are being recommended for our adminis, uh, for our legislative agenda?
I have heard and Seth helped me out. Steve's not here, uh, and maybe Eric Mueller, that some of the local city councils may request that we also include in the statute that the cities are required to collect this privileged tax on our behalf. The reason being, and Seth, please help me here, is that I think it's easier for them to look their taxpayers in the eye and say the legislature made us do it.
We also have a, uh, a, um, provision in our, um, in our charter that any additional tax that's imposed by the city council has to go to a vote of the voters before it can be enacted. And so, um, that's one of the reasons why we would push for that to be a state fix rather than one that's optional because it would force us to put that to our voters. And it wouldn't pass.
Yeah, I guess I would just chime in and say it's, it's not realistic to ask local elected officials to vote to tax their voters for somebody else's benefit is what it's going to be perceived as. Uh, it's not a vote that we're gonna want to recommend to them. I think the other part that's important there is if the legislature mandates it, it can be consistent and universally applied across all those jurisdictions, rather than it being potentially modified jurisdiction by jurisdiction, which then starts to get us into a situation where we're not treating, you know, like residents in a similar fashion. So, um, it, the man, the mandates, um, I, I think is an important, uh, part of the legislative fix.
One model that we are looking at is a construction excise tax was adopted by the legislature a number of years ago. And as part of that, the local governments were required by, to enter into intergovernmental agreements by statute with local school districts to hand that construction excise tax off to the school districts, which was the purpose of the legislation. So there's some models in place where this has happened in the past that we can draw from.
That model is also valuable because it can all, it also specifies that there is an administrative fee that is granted to the jurisdiction that's doing the collecting, which is something else that will help make this be a little bit more acceptable to the jurisdictions if they're gonna have to, quote, do this collection work that, you know, their, their, their city general fund or their utility is gonna get some compensation for it.
There are two other components I would like to put on the table so that people can start thinking about them. I think one is protection for the new district that as inflation bites into our revenues, that there is mechanisms in place that are allowed for the urban board to raise its rates, to maintain its, uh, sustainable operations. At the same time, we likely want to put protections in for our local government partners that a new board can't go beyond a certain rate increase without certain hoops or approvals or collaboration. So again, we need to discuss those options and how they can best be applied.
Hey, can you, uh, Jim, just clarify that last element to me?
Um, I want to make sure that the new board does not ultimately, uh, lose its ability to generate sufficient revenue because of inflation and cost increases. And at the same time, I believe it will be important for us to structure some limits on the new board's ability to generate new revenue. Because we know that other local governments are challenged with new revenue sources as well. So we have to guard the floor and the ceiling in some fashion. And I think there's more conversation that needs to be had to figure out good ways to achieve both those ends. Did that help?
Um, it, it all comes down to who's paying the tax. And so, um, I, I would urge us to think about making certain that we treat entities that are governmental entities in the same fashion that we would a commercial entity. Um, and not get caught into a situation which becomes an I G A that has to be negotiated um, on a different basis than what is required of a commercial entity. Just, you know, it's gonna be tough to sell this, uh, to, to sell this operating model and, um, making certain that it is perceived be fair is gonna be really pretty critical.
Great. Well, thank you, Eric. I appreciate those, um, comments that, that and the previous comments underscore our need to, to set this operating, this year one operating forecast and then get into these, um, challenges for, um, how, what we can collect, how we can collect and it's, it's distribution amongst floodplain properties and the larger district. I look forward to getting into that piece. Um, it's three oh three. I apologize for my shoddy facilitation skills in addition to my poor mic. But we should, um, we should close the meeting. I would just ask you to consider what you, what more information you need. So then our, at our, uh, June fifteenth meeting and certainly by July twentieth, I think, you feel that you have, um, you can vote on a motion for setting this year one budget forecast. Lastly, to staff, I think we need to make sure we reach out to board members who weren't here today. Call their attention to the importance of the next two meetings, um, and that their, their eyes and their attention are on this question and the, um, the forecast as, as previously, uh, prepared. Any, uh, closing comments before we, uh, before we close for today?
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the feedback. And you know how to reach me if you have questions or concerns. I look forward to hearing from.
Great. Thanks, folks. Have a good day.